Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Work Session this evening, October the twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. Work sessions are last formal business meetings that enable council to obtain and discuss information regarding town issues from staff members and/or consultants. Like regular meetings of council, citizens are encouraged to attend and observe work sessions. However, they do not include public hearings, but do allow for public comment at the end of the work session unless otherwise called off by council. Please note at the end of the meeting, speakers are limited to three minutes and a timer will be set. Council does not take an action vote on items during a work session other than to vote to place an item on the council meeting for consideration. In an official vote, council work sessions are streamed live on the town's YouTube channel and minutes are taken and posted on the town's webpage. Following approval of council. I am Hazel Livingston, the mayor of the town of Lexington, and I would like to introduce my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Prochem Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his left is council member Todd Law.
Good evening.
His left is council member Jenny Michaels.
Good evening.
To my right is council member Todd Carnes, and we're welcome back.
Good evening.
To his right is council member Gavin Smith.
Good evening.
And to his right is council member Will Allen.
Good evening.
At this time, I'd like to ask council member Michaels to lead us in the vacation.
Let us pray. God, through this governing body tonight, we pray for wisdom, for strength, and for courage to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interest of others above our own. May we act with love for the common good. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. At this time, council member Law, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council meeting is at the session prior to this meeting where we discussed personnel issues. And we will be going back into executive session after this meeting, so I do not have a full report or a vote to take at this time. Are there any deletions from tonight's agenda on the work session? Hearing none, our first presentation is from Assistant to the Town Administrator Wesley Crosby, courtroom council chambers, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to take you on a tour this evening of our newly upgraded technology now in operation here in the courtroom council chambers. These advancements were made possible thanks to earmarked grant funding awarded to the town in two thousand and twenty-three. This gave us a unique opportunity to modernize key systems, particularly those critical to our police department and our courtroom operations. Together with Walker Brewer and Michael Tolbert, we worked diligently to bring the facility into the twenty-first century. Our goal was not just to upgrade the technology, but to ensure that the new system remains user-friendly and highly reliable for everyone who were using. I'm now going to turn it over to Michael, who will give you a demonstration of how the system is improved. If y'all have any questions, please let us know.
Hey, everyone. So, as Wesley said, we wanted to make the system more user-friendly. We wanted to make it simplistic. And with that, we wanted to upgrade the equipment, bring it into the twenty-first century and make it broadcast, um, make it professional broadcast grade. With that, we have upgraded the mics. Let me... We've upgraded the mics. Um, we have around ten new microphones. So during our planning commission, we actually have a total of nine people on our planning commission. So now, planning commission members won't be sharing the mics. Over here, next to Laura, we will have another mic. This will come in handy with our lawyers such as Brad and Cliff when they're down here during court. And if you notice at the very top, there is a big square. That's actually a microphone which will pick up if anyone is talking, like, um, in front of everyone. Does that make sense? So this didn't change much. This is actually how I control all the audio levels. And if you notice, it says courtroom. We have a special courtroom setting just for them because they don't use all the microphones. They also don't use all the cameras. So again, we wanted to make it simplistic as possible. And this is how I change all of our shots in the courtroom, um, actually. I forgot to, I forgot to show you all shots. So this is one of our newest shots. I don't necessarily like it because I don't like being on camera, but, um, this was actually came from the judge. He recommended that we have this shot so that we could protect our juries, our jury members, um, during jury trials. Because they can't, we can't reveal who they are during, during the trials. I think that that pretty much wraps it up. If y'all have any questions, feel free to ask.
Uh, where did the server block that was behind you go?
Oh, great question. So all of that is now over here in this beautiful showing. And with the upgrades, we were able to get, I don't, I don't know if anyone noticed, we actually had two VHS players over here. We were able to get rid of them with you guys.
VHS.
Wow. Anyone else have any questions?
I do have one other thing I'd like to point out. We now have a TV up here behind you all. You all aren't looking at it, but everyone who is up here speaking and wants to refer to the PowerPoint now has a visual, whereas you used to have to bring a hard copy. We can now see it all as well. And the judge appreciated that because sometimes they would have to wheel in a TV on a cart in order to show things, and so this is permanently affixed. And it can adjust so it can lay flat against the wall when you guys are coming in and out, or when it's not in use, it stays out.
Someone's intended to tell you to stop. Our next proposed, um, presentation is from Ms. Paula Cannon. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, uh, proposal rainbow bridge. If you want to come forward and we give you five to seven minutes for a presentation.
Hello, and I'm Renee Forster also, and thank you for seeing us tonight. I'm gonna pass these out while Pat speaks. We have some pictures.
I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity for us to come before the council to print, to present something very dear to me. And I think that the community would find it also very good for what we're proposing to do. A couple of years ago, my, my little dog passed away, and I'd had him for like eighteen years. And we were looking for something to remember him. And we have a home in Lake Lure, and there was a bridge there called Flowery Bridge, which has been destroyed by the storm recently. And it had a little, little bridge called Rainbow Bridge. And everybody would go there and take collars of their deceased pets and put it on the little bridge. And it, it really started just, every time I'd go, every, every few months, I'd go back and there'd be more and more collars. And, and then they also had a website that you could donate money, which I think would be good for this community because the shelters could use money. You know, if you want to honor your pet, then you would just give money to the shelters. And, and, um, so we were thinking about having something beautiful like this in our park here. The park is just absolutely gorgeous. I've been going there recently, and y'all have just done an awesome job. It's so pretty. But, um, our, I just thought the community could have a place that they could take when their dogs pass away. And, you know, the kids don't know what to do. They love their animals, and they want to go and do something for their animals. And they can go down to the park and leave a little collar, and then they can donate to the shelter in the honor of their, of their little dog today. So we were thinking that that might be good for us to have here, and I wanted to propose and see what, what y'all thought about it. It really was a beautiful thing. And, and then we had the, it was terrible to have the hurricane to tear everything up because that was just, just so terrible. I mean, it destroyed everything. The bridge, the, the flow, the, everything that was there is gone.
There's a video available that you can look online, and you can see the park, and it's really, it's beautiful.
It's gorgeous, and, and it's gone, and every bit of it is gone. And so I, we just started thinking about it, and I thought, you know, that would be such a nice thing for the community to have here where they could mourn their pets, and then we could do something good for the shelters that, you know, the dogs need these things that they're not getting, you know? They need food, and so we just thought that we would propose this and see how, how it went.
The pictures that you're looking at are some pictures that Pat took of the property where you guys have the bridges. And there's a little creek bed that's right off of one of your little walkways that we thought that would be a great spot to just come in off of. And maybe we could even have the person who did your bridge build one, or we could seek out someone to do that and get that approved also through you.
Um, we thought we might could get some donations, like from Lowe's, to get the material to build the bridge. And, um, and I'm sure people would donate, but...
And other sponsors.
Yeah. I just thought it would be a good, good thing here for the community. I think it would be something different, you know? And being that I was familiar with it, and every time I would go there, I'd go and see more and more and more of the little collars. And people would, people would come from all states to bring their little collar for their dog. And we just kind of thought it'd be a neat thing for the community. So I just wanted to see what y'all thought.
After putting the bug in her ear, I also have talked to people, and they said, well, it was so far to drive, and we've heard of it. So I've had a lot of people say that they'd be very interested also in supporting it, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Do any of y'all have any questions? Any comments? So y'all were saying that, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions for clarification. Y'all were saying that y'all would be willing to raise, raise the money and get the bridge approved.
Absolutely.
To do for the town. And I know you picked a spot, but I know that's, um, may not be where staff would recommend it, say before we...
We would be open to wherever you would let us have.
Before further along, I would like to look at and evaluate and see if there's some spots that y'all would recommend or not, and then we could bring it back to council in November's work session.
We'd appreciate that.
And then we could get our supporters and get the people who would back it and get the funds for it.
Okay.
And get that to present to you also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next update is from David Wyman. Update, PPA lead and copper requirements.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
I'm sorry.
I mentioned I would give routine updates on where we are, so that's what this is. Since we last met and I updated you, we have submitted, we completed our inventory. We submitted it to the regulators as required and on time. I thought you'd be interested in the statistics of what that inventory showed. So, um, lines containing lead or presumed to contain lead, there's seven hundred and ninety-nine surfaces. Again, stepping back, this would include water mains, water mains that supply water mains, water mains that supply surfaces, um, up to our meter, and then potentially from our meter to the house. So those are kind of the, the components. We found seven hundred and ninety-nine surfaces, which represent about seven percent of our system. Galvanized requiring lead, these are, um, pipes that were galvanized and coated, and that coating could contain lead. We found a hundred and eighty of those, about one point six percent. So those are really the two, um, bad ones we need to replace in the next ten years, and we have about eight point six percent of our system. So pretty small number in total. Most of those are contained in the older part of town, as you might presume. So, um, no lead, ten thousand four hundred and five, or ninety-one point four percent of our system. We can rule out. There's another status, um, that is status unknown. Currently, we have none that fall into that category. But as we start replacing lines, um, there may be homes where we don't know what their pipes and internal plumbing are. And once our lines are non-led, they might fall into an unknown. So there's a component there where we'll, we'll be reaching out to the homeowners to educate them and work with them, um, help them move forward. Currently, we're in the process of putting together our letters to mail out. So we have thirty days from the sixteenth time of submittal to get our three categories of letters, again, lead, GRR, and, um, no lead. The new customers are going to be notified. Still working with finance to figure out what that process is going to look like. Devil is in the details. It's easy for a regulator to say notify all customers, but we have to figure out how to do that while updating our inventory. So, um, that process is being worked out. And we are still working, um, on coming up with a plan to put it on the website. So hopefully, we, um, met with Michael and Woody, and we talked about, um, some potential webpage where you can go in, type in your address, and it'll bring up a map and then show you, um, what you've got. So we're working on that and hope to have that rolled out relatively shortly. Looking over the rest of the bullet points, it's, um, pretty much what I had mentioned before, and these are just things on the horizon. So as we approach them, I'm gonna keep them on the, the updates. Just so you know, that's what we're working towards, and as we knock them off, I'll let you know that we're knocking them off.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
David, just, I'm curious, uh, you seven hundred and ninety-nine letters hit, and I think what I heard you say is that we, we presume there's lead either on the system side, pre-meter, or on the other side between the meter and the house. We're not sure. We're just in a large category. And do we, I, I would anticipate getting seven hundred and ninety-nine calls going, how do I test my water for lead? And so are we, are we set up for that? Or how do we want to help people facilitate that? What is the cost going at? How does that go?
So you're right, that could happen. We are presuming because of the types of materials that's out there. At the same time, um, we've been doing lead and copper testing continually. So although those lines may contain lead, the, um, West Columbia Water Plant uses chemicals, um, that are in the water that help prevent leaching of lead. We do testing throughout the system. We submit those. We've had no hits. So although we have lines that are prone to, um, lead, we haven't seen any evidence that there is leaching, but of course now, the push is to get them out of the system and replaced.
So, so if I understand right, we're currently doing lead testing, and if we know where these seven hundred and ninety-nine potential problems are, we're currently testing in those areas.
Correct.
And all of our current testing shows no significant levels of lead in that water. So that's obviously going to be part of the communication, I would presume, which would certainly allay a lot of those fears for those people to know that, that testing is going on. But just for my curiosity, if I, as a private individual, if I get one of those, uh, what, what does, what does it cost to, to do a lead test and...
I don't remember off the top of my head. I know in the letter, one, we do mention that our system has been in compliance with lead and copper. I also included some home, um, test kits that are approved that you can go if you're worried to do a home test. And I believe I noted in there that if they have a positive, then they would like a confirmation. They can reach out to us.
Perfect. So really, the overall messaging is that, is that we have, we've tested all that we can in these areas. They've been identified as potential areas, but we haven't identified any issues, but we're putting you on notice that you're in a potential area. If you have any issues, we let you know.
Correct. And then, um, hopefully with the, um, the website that we have set up, they'll be able to see where, um, their lines lie too. So if it's unknown, we're encouraging, um, hey, do a little homework on your side. Let us know. Keep us updated. So the inventory is going to be a live document. We're going to be updating it continually with, um, either projects we're undertaking to replace things, get it out of the system, along with, um, new builds and customers that are renovating or actually confirming things.
Yeah, I, I think the wording on that is key because e- even looking at this, it changes the tenor of the entire thing when you tell me we've, we've been actively testing all of these areas and have not had any positive results.
Yeah, it was, it was walking that fine line between the required language and also, um, letting them know that we've been well within compliance the whole time and doing the due diligence required of us.
It's a difference in big government and little government. Little government's a lot more efficient.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Madam Mayor, I, I was gonna pig, piggyback on what Todd said because that was exactly where my brain was going, is what this letter is gonna say. Because what is put in there is going to determine how many of those calls you get. You know, the positive spin, the facts, that kind of thing.
And we're, we're kind of prepared. We're gonna get calls no matter what. That's kind of the nature of the, of the beast. But I, I think the staff is prepared to, um, answer those calls and allay their fears, you know? To what extent, we'll figure out with each one, case-by-case basis.
Gotcha. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next is, um, our last presentation from our economic developer, Jack Stewart on shop and dine local campaign.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Excuse my paperwork just up here with me. So, um, I, I feel like I'm kind of preaching to the choir when I say this, but when you buy local, when you shop local, when you dine local, um, that makes a difference here in our community. When you support the businesses that are owned and operated by your friends, family, um, loved ones, it gives back to our community more than it would if still we had a big box store. So it means a lot more, especially around the holidays as people prepare for that, uh, and everything. So, um, there is a national campaign and one that we participated in last year with the recommendation from Councilman Smith, uh, of Small Business Saturday that we had last year. And that was a hit. And we did a lot, um, of legwork, running around town and giving out signs. And I, I think that really helped out our local community, business community in doing that. So we, uh, we upped the ante a little bit this year. Hopefully, we keep climbing each year with a little bit more and more. So, um, I, I'm here to present to you today the Shop Lex SC campaign and the Sh- Dine Lex SC campaign. Here's a nice visual representation. Oh, it's on the screen. I can see that. So, so, um, these are our new signs for this year, and, um, this is kind of what we're working with. So, um, and a little bit more about it. This campaign will start, um, we're gonna start signups. I'm actually gonna send out an email tomorrow to our local retailers and our local restaurants, that, for them to sign up officially. So last year, we made signs. We went out. We just popped up, kind of surprised them a little bit, or shot them a text that said, hey, we're coming. This year, to make sure we have enough signs and we're doing the right thing, uh, we're gonna have them sign up. While we're having them sign up, we then get their website and how to tag them on social media and things like that. So we're gonna use that benefit as well to create a list on our website of who's participating in the shop local campaign this year. So then you can link to their website, or you can see their social media, or anything like that, so. From that, uh, signups are actually gonna end on November twelfth, uh, which will give us enough time to print enough signs for everybody. And at that point, um, people can start to come pick up their signs as well. So we'll have the signs here at Town Hall, and then, um, we'll also, um, yeah, they'll be here at Town Hall. Uh, and then the official start date for this, and this actually was, um, changed by the Small Business Advisory Committee that met last week when we proposed this to them. They had a great idea of, the initial idea was to start this, um, with Black Friday, uh, and, and starting then. But they actually said, hey, a lot of people are already gonna be gearing up, going to big box stores. Would you mind if you started a week early, um, so that we can kind of compete with some of those folks that can come spend their money at a small business prior to all of that? So we're gonna start, uh, November twenty-second, uh, which will be the Friday before Black Friday. So you have the Thanksgiving week with that. And rather than just running for a week or a day, uh, we decided we're gonna run for the entire holiday season. So we're gonna start November twenty-second, and this will wrap up, uh, January first. So we're gonna get a whole month of this campaign within that, so. Also, in addition to this, uh, to get a little bit of, um, skin in the game, I guess, we are gonna be offering, um, some, some gift certificates as well. So a cool little thing to get people involved, shoppers involved, get our, uh, retailers involved, restaurants involved. There will be a social media campaign that if a customer takes a picture at a local retailer, and then they post it online, and they tag shoplex SC, um, using the hashtag or dinelex SC, they also tag the town, tag the retailer they're at, you know, just kind of spread the love on all of that. They'll be eligible for a one hundred dollar gift certificate, um, in a drawing. So we're gonna give out two of those, uh, in the month of December to whoever. We're gonna do a random number generator of the folks that participate in that. And, um, that kind of works in twofold. Customer has potential to win a gift card, and the retailer has the potential of having the customer that was in their store get a gift card to their store. So, um, that's kind of where we're at today, and, uh, I'm very excited to roll this program out as soon as possible. So any questions?
I have one, Madam Mayor. Yeah, can you explain what the process for like a local business is for signing up? Do they come get their signs? They get delivered? What does it look like?
Yes, so, um, I'm gonna send out an email tomorrow that should have most of them in there if they are missed in some way. We will also be posting, I guess, the link to our Facebook and things like that to our website in order to have the signup on there. Once they sign up, they'll be emailed directions, um, to kind of next steps with that. But the next steps in reality are gonna look like, um, after the November twenty-second, or, excuse me, November twelfth, when the signups are finished, they'll be able to come to Town Hall and pick up their signs. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um, last year, we had an issue with when the, the signs, uh, businesses were writing their names. Are y'all going to give some sort of instructions with it to make sure that they're using like a black Sharpie marker versus like a ballpoint pen so that, you know, their name can actually show up?
Great question. Um, we, uh, it's under advisement right now. We're, we're trying to come up with how to do that, um, exactly. And it might be as simple as giving instructions for that. Uh, we've also toyed with the idea of how do we, you know, do we try and write on them ourselves? So we're trying to figure out kind of manpower side as well as everything else with that. But that's, that's a great point. Some were hard to read last year, so we'd love to...
I think some of those were written by us delivering, obviously, that's where we were at, possibly, Tuesday.
You can buy some Sharpies.
So I think it was, you know, having the Sharpies, being there, being on time, doing it. But great idea last year, Gavin. Thank you for doing this and for happening again this year. And for the team working so hard on it too, to put it together and bring it a step further. And I do encourage you to go by and take pictures with, uh, sign and have them on your Facebook page and...
Yep. I think the idea that we had was, um, each of you would take a picture with, uh, at least one restaurant and one retailer, and have this posted on our Facebook. And then, um, we're gonna be going out as well as a team and getting everybody else to sign up.
And you'll be getting without us to come in and do a video, put together the video?
Yes, we'll be getting with you as well. There will be a video campaign that rolls out with this. Michael's department on scheduling and everything, but, uh, yeah, this will be a full-fledged social media campaign. Everybody's gonna know about it.
Starting in the morning when I have to speak to West Columbia Casey Chamber. It'll be shared there.
The word's out. Alrighty, thank y'all.
Thank you. Next up is, um, our first business item. Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton's sponsorship request for Mission Lexington.
Mayor, I'll leave it to myself in a second, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, once again, this year, Mission Lexington is hosting a fundraising event at our Ice House Pavilion. This year, it's called Oyster Roast for a Reason. They're hosting it on November fifteenth. They have asked the town to consider sponsoring the event this year. We did sponsor last year a five hundred dollar sponsorship. Included in your packet is the flyer outlining the sponsorship opportunities. In addition to requesting a sponsorship, the Executive Director... In addition to requesting a sponsorship, the executive director for the nonprofit is also requesting in-kind support of eight rectangle tables, twenty chairs, and reservation of fifteen parking spaces in the Ice House parking lot for their uh VIP sponsors. Uh, Mission Lexington is paying the nonprofit rate for the rental and that's four hundred and fifty dollars and they have paid their deposit per town policies. So, um, just looking for direction from you all as to whether to place on the council agenda, agenda for consideration on November fourth.
Madam Mayor, I would be in favor of that. I've always been a big fan of the mission that Lexington, Mission Lexington has done. I think this would be a worthy endeavor again as we have in the past.
Mission to put it on the agenda.
I would move that we place this on the agenda for
Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyles, Councilmember Cards, any other discussion? Thank you. Councilmember Lyles, your comments, you're right.
Madam Mayor, I just have a question. Rachel, we had talked last meeting or two meetings ago about putting together some policies around how we do and don't donate or accept donations. Do we have a policy for how we do donate to organizations?
That's a question I would have for Stuart. Are you familiar? Do you have such policies for making donations or contributions?
I'd have to refresh my memory, but we do have things that were specifically in the budget at one point. We have, but um most of it was council deferred to staff for things that were specifically um that the town was involved in. For example, we could um give out used facilities when the town was involved for organizations who have training, for example. That's the general delegation of, of authority. But council has traditionally had certain things that we have funded um each year and often those are in the budget. So it's always at your discretion.
And there's also, uh, we have always tried to make sure that we could articulate the substantial public purpose for the expenditure. It's not too hard to do when you're talking about what Mission Lexington does. That's not too hard to substantiate, but that's one of the things we've looked at.
Yeah, I think it's brought up every year, but Mission Lexington, it relieves a significant burden for a police department on domestic violence issues or homelessness. I mean, there's two specter, there is none as yet. I think what we do for Mission Lexington is a drop in the bucket what they do for us, so.
Yeah, and, and to be clear, I, I fully support doing this. I, I guess I was just asking, as we consider how we accept, maybe we should look at just setting some policy for how we also give. I know we, I know I personally have been approached by other organizations outside, can we donate to them or could we do this? And I don't know that there's ever been some guardrails for exactly how we do and don't decide that. Maybe, ma- maybe we have it by, uh, by design. I don't, I don't know.
If I remember correctly, we do have some guidelines because we used to get asked by everybody and we had to do a budget item that was a limited amount of money that we did.
No, three or four years ago, we stopped saying yes to everybody.
Yeah, so I think there was something good in place. Maybe just bring that back next work session and so all the new members can know too how it's done, so you would be prepared if somebody asks.
I think the one straggler was how many of boys or girls stayed from a former council member, but he'll dearly do that one, but.
Any other discussion? While there's a favor, raise your right hand. And it is unanimous. It's the only item we had to put on the agenda tonight. Next up, we have two items for council information. The first one, Assistant Town Administrator Wesley Crosby, Domestic Violence and Sex Crimes Investigator Grant Award.
Thank you again, Mayor, uh, Madam Mayor and Council. Uh, this is just to inform you that we have received a second year grant award from the Department of Public Safety. Uh, this is for our Domestic Violence and Sex Crimes Investigator. So far, we've received about fifty percent of the funding that we expect, which is forty-eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Uh, once the Bureau of Justice Assistant disperses the remaining funds, we expect to get that in the next coming months. Uh, this does pay for ninety percent of the costs for this investigator. And we have one more year that we will, we will be able to apply for this funding.
Any questions?
Whoever's agreeing.
Um, I worked on it with uh Lieutenant Timmerman on this. The two of us worked on this together.
Nice job. We need more.
Thank you. Our next item for information only is from our Town Administrator Rachel Gleaton, twenty twenty-four Council Goals Update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I wanted um to provide you all with an update on the goals that you set for yourself this year as we go into our fourth and final quarter. There were thirty-three specific tasks that you wanted um us to work towards or to achieve. And I'm happy to say that sixty percent are complete, so we're proud of that. And there's only one left to be assigned, otherwise, everything else is in progress. I've made updates for each of the goals that were listed, um, that states where we are. And if they are not yet complete, many of them have the proposed um completion date in their update as well.
I'm sure y'all have looked at it and I'm sure you're already thinking about your new things for next year.
We can give you twenty-five next year.
No, no, no. Next staff may find us all, that's okay. We'll stay with the five. But great job, staff. We appreciate y'all so much and taking this and running with it. We're impressed that that much of it's done and and there's some of it's just in the pipeline and it's still not even finished.
Yes.
Is there anything else? I guess, do I need to um
Make a motion.
Let, hold up. I gotta get my questions, cuz I have y'all probably. Any questions from the news media? Any comments from the public regarding items on the agenda? Any additional comments from staff?
I have one more comment, um, just to make. Early voting began today and we do have an early voting location within the town. I believe the address is six oh five West Main Street. It's at the county annex building. Traffic is very heavy in that area on many days anyway, but please be patient because there will likely be heavy traffic there over the next couple of weeks during um early voting opportunities. So, I believe that early voting is not pre-assigned and so if you can identify another location to visit, you may um consider doing that or voting on Election Day uh if you don't wanna wait for the lines. But otherwise, please just be patient with traffic on the roadways in the area.
Thank you. I was clearly told it was a three and a half hour wait today. And you said you had some too. So, um, that is all and now I will let you do that and I guess we can close out afterwards.
Make a motion, we recess back into executive session.
Do I have a second? You have a second, sit. I'll endeavor, raise your right hand. And here's your numbers.